Forward to handle these two things any way you see fit. I will, you know, say, keep in mind, there may be ways that are looked at by public perception in different ways than others, so, but it is, it's your choice. I'm just, uh, there's several different ways to go about, uh, the vacant seat. You can appoint someone, you can do an open, uh, uh, election, um, or you can do, um, any other format y'all want to do. The city attorney may want to pro and con it a little bit, but I'm, I feel like it's, it's your decision, what you feel like is fair, and how y'all feel best about that.
Question, what your current charter provides, and that is that whenever there's a vacancy on the board of commissioners, stated the board's responsibility to do that. That way to do that. Person would, uh, don't fill the seat within ninety days from the occurrence of the vacancy, as I've stated. Election. So, that's it. There's a lot of discretion there, and I think there are a lot of different ways to do it. Uh, I think what our office had suggested was doing a request for qualification. Here so that, uh, conduct interviews of those applicants and I, my personal belief is that if you want to get the best talent called in the area where you advertise that, you may disagree, that's just one person's opinion. I do not. City manager position? Okay, I was talking about this, I was talking, I conflated that, you're right. The open seat, the, yeah, no, I was conflating it. So, the open seat to the board absolutely has to live in the city. I was talking about the city manager position, my apologies. That would be the next item. We'll talk about it in a little bit. Position has, you know, we filled those, Mr. Butler and I recall, we filled, Mr. Dawson was one of those individuals we filled, didn't he? He was appointed to an open seat at one time. He's the only one I can recall in the last few years who filled an open board of commissioners seat. But you're right, Mayor, that person would have to be a citizen of Fairview, and that could be done however you wish to do it. If you don't do it within ninety days, there's going to be a special election.
Mr. Potter, if we chose to go with candidates to come for qualifications for the open seat, could that be scheduled at the next meeting prior to the, uh, would we still have plenty of time then to?
If you chose to do it that way, you could do that. You could say, uh, you could put on your city website if people are interested in the position, they could, they could so advise the city that they're interested. And, you know, we've, just like you filled, uh, Mayor, how the city has filled board seats before. Applicants for Board of Planning Commission or, um, other committees that the city has, they've appeared before you and sort of talked about their experience and why they're interested, and, um, maybe they have filled out an application in advance that, hey, you've got something written that they could look at, we'd be happy to fill that out for you. And then, you know, the, the position's filled by someone making a motion. That's just it. Someone could make a motion that I like candidate A, and I make a motion that we fill the seat with candidate A. It gets a second, gets a vote, then that person fills the seat. Right? Now, that's one way of doing it. Another way of doing it is you may already have somebody in mind, one or more of you may know of somebody that you really like and would like that person to fill the seat. You could do that tonight. I mean, you could do that any night. You could say, you know, I know this person, I think this person would make a great member of the Board of Commissioners, and I'm making a motion that we fill that position, and if that person gets a second and gets a majority vote, that is your new commissioner, if that person's willing to accept the position. I don't know if that answered your question, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, sir.
Did anyone get the actual amount of a special election? The cost of it?
Twenty-five thousand to start and up. From Chad Bright.
So, twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand and up.
Okay.
Got a letter this afternoon of fifteen to twenty thousand, and it could have variations of costs, yeah. I think we, similar to election two years ago, we had the three highest vote getters take, take the seats and the votes, and so we just had an election. We have recent numbers and votes, and I think a special election would probably not bring out as big of a turnout, and I don't feel, in my opinion, interviewing or taking applications, it's not our duty to hand select or hand pick. I think it's more of a voted on thing, so it's, it's just feedback from me.
I don't think it's a, if we can decide on someone, I don't think it's a good idea, in my opinion, to go to a special election just because of the cost, and we've incurred quite a bit of cost already in different situations, so I would really like if we could decide on someone and choose that person without going to a special election.
And the way I read the charter where it says the, the remaining expired term shall be filled, um, sorry, any vacancy on the board occurring prior to a regular city election shall be filled by the remaining members of the board until that election. So to me, I interpret it as it, it should be appointed or should be filled that way, and if you're unable to make a, a resolution within ninety days, you would, you would proceed with the special election, is kind of how I interpret.
I think that's fair, yes. So you're, you're free to, uh, in public, amongst, amongst you, you're free as long as we're in a public meeting to discuss who you like. I mean, you're, people are able to say, I like this person, and you guys can debate the merits of, of different candidates if you choose to do that. You have the right to do that. It's a, it's a, it's a tough position to be in, but regardless of what you're going to do, you're going to make somebody upset.
May I ever can, so we just had an election in November where it's one of the closest races that I could find on, on record to vote, and the third highest vote getter lost by nineteen votes. And so my, my feel, based off how we did it two years ago with the third highest vote getter, got a two-year term, I feel confident that nearly fifteen hundred people voted for Chris McDonald, and that, that third seat could be filled, and we can feel confident that it has citizens backing of at least fifteen hundred residents.
My concern about that candidate is, um, I know that he was in the election, but he did not win, and, um, I think the public has spoken about realtors and developers involved in, on the boards, and that would be my concern. If he had won the election, that's one thing, but not winning the election and us putting someone that is in that field and might not be the best, um, decision.
You throw a jab across the board. I, I think he, you know, if he was here, he had a baby today, or we would bring him up, and I would be happy to ask him questions, but I don't think that he's had any transactions in real estate. I think he is a realtor, but I don't think he's very active a realtor. But I just don't see interviewing and trying to hand select, uh, who we think is best fit when fifteen hundred people thought that he was a good fit. He's, and he's been, he ran two years ago, he's been on the Planning Commission for nearly two years, he's been at every meeting for months. I think as we transition to a new city manager, there, it's imperative that we have someone up here that knows what's happening, what we're working on, the zoning ordinance, the capital improvement plans, all the things that we have actively, somebody who could jump right in the seat and know what is currently, the business that's currently being held.
And I think with him being on the Planning Commission, that's a good spot for him.
Uh, first off, I'm personally not for Chris, um, because he won so many votes. I had actually talked to someone because I anticipated this particular situation to come up, and I talked to Mitch Doughty long before the election ever got underway real good, so if it comes to a choice, I would probably choose Mitch, Mitch Doughty, which I've known for several years. He's a businessman in Fairview, worked several people from, that live here in Fairview. He's always supported the baseball teams, the soccer teams, and, you know, just a longtime friend, and just because he's a friend doesn't mean that I would say that he's a, would be a good commissioner. I just know he would be a good commissioner. He did sit on the Planning Commission, uh, for several years, and, uh, that would be my choice.
If I had a choice, it would be Tiffany Wilson Mobley. I feel she really cares for the heart of Fairview. She cares for the citizens, she cares for our park, um, and she really knows her stuff. She also, she sees our children in the school system. She knows how it's, what it's like. She's very, very intelligent and knows her stuff. So if we, I would throw her in there in a heartbeat. So, that's who I would, but honestly, I really, really want the citizens to tell us who they want up here. But, you know.
I agree with that statement, and that, and that's where I think it's, the fourteen hundred fifty-seven citizens that voted for McDonald or a special election would be how, how I feel about those.
I, I believe with the way that I hear everything, that that's what it would go to anyway, would be a special election, you know, so, uh, and I've had a lot of citizens out there that would love to see a special election. But if we're challenged to select someone, uh, as I stated a minute ago, Mitch would be my choice, but, uh, a special election would be, uh, the citizens' choice, in my opinion, too.
It would require three of you, three of the four of you to agree on a candidate, and, and you're deadlocked forever, uh, you know, there would be a special election. Sometimes you can find, uh, sometimes you can find an alternative candidate on a, I don't, I don't know if I'm historically correct, but I think, uh, like James K. Pope was nominated in like forty-seven ballot or something in Democratic condition. So you can, you can sometimes find a, uh, a consensus candidate, but if you can't do that, that's weird.
Well, I agree with Mr. Hall. I believe that Mitch Doughty is a good candidate. He's, um, his family's been here for a long time, he's supported this community, he gives back to the community monetarily, helps anywhere, any way he can at City Hall. He's been on the Planning Commission, he understands how that works, so if we, um, if it came down to it, Mitch Doughty would also be my choice.
And I, I had the pleasure to serve Mr. Doughty on the Planning Commission, known Mr. Doughty in, in business, and through, since I was a, a young child, going to school with his kids, and, and think the world of him, I think he's a great guy. I had a conversation today, I did not think that he would be interested in it, um, and so, he's here tonight, welcome to speak or, or talk.
I did speak to Brandon today, um, trying to get everybody's opinion on what's, what's best for the city. That's what I want. I don't want name slinging, I don't want finger pointing. I've talked to both Mr. Hall and Mayor Anderson earlier, before the election and everything, and I just said, I'm here to help. I live here, I'm bringing my business out of Nashville to the old City Hall, we're coming before the January meeting to present our building and everything. I want to be part of our community, I'm here to help, but I understand where you're coming from, I respect you, I work with you. Everybody's opinion matters to me, I'm just here to help. If you guys need me on the board, be happy to help. I think I can bring a different perspective to some of the circumstances coming up. I don't really want to tag along with anybody, I want my vote to count, and any questions, I'd be free to answer. I understand about Chris and, you know, having the reelection, he got his votes, he wants to come up here and just sit in the seat because, hey, I got some votes. Whatever you guys decide to do, I'm here to help. I don't have any hard feelings, any which way it goes, I'll work with anybody, and I still part of the, the community, and oh, Police Department, anytime they call, I'm available, so, you know, I'll be willing to do anything. I just don't want any of the mud slinging, like I told you today, I don't want to accuse him, I don't know him, I don't know Ms. Leslie, I don't know you folks, but, you know, when you guys ask me to come up, I'm happy to help any way I can. If it works out, you have to go to a special election, that's what you guys will do. I personally wouldn't want to be a part of that, I'm just here to help, but if I need to, I'll do whatever you guys ask of me, I'm just a citizen of Fairview that, you know, offers to help you guys out and be happy to sit up there, or happy to help you while you're sitting up there, just like, like I said, so, whatever you guys decide to do, I'm here to help, and no hard feelings either way, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Mobley, would you like to speak to the board?
I feel very similar to Mr. Doughty, very good friends with them as well. Um, it really should be the citizens' choice, in my feeling. Um, we had three, we had three folks running, and I can imagine that if folks wanted to know who was going to fill that seat, they would like to be able to be a part of that. I am also a big supporter of Mr. Doughty. I'm also a big supporter of, um, you know, just having someone on that board to make sure that it's extremely balanced. Um, I think the best board you could have would be a board with folks from lots of different, lots and lots of different jobs, um, different types of people. You might want to have somebody who's from the rural areas, people who are, who fill lots and lots of different, um, areas. I offered to apply for that position because I am extremely, extremely devoted to this community as well, just like so many of us. Um, I have gone through a lot of processes those last two years and learning more and more, and want to be involved, and I have offered to be a part of the Planning Commission several times and applied, and I haven't been able to get on there, um, so I would have loved to be in a part of that, so this is another opportunity. Um, my CV, resume, if you will, goes on and on and on as far as service. I've been serving here in Fairview since two thousand three, and, um, I have the most amazing job of all, I get to teach children, and, uh, it's just the most miraculous thing. So I love spending time watching our children fit into that piece of the puzzle wherever they need to be. I'm in K through twelve, I get to see them develop into these amazing adults and go out into the world, and if I can just be a little tiny piece of that, I'm really grateful. I work with lots and lots of different amazing teachers who we just are problem solving constantly, and, um, it's just the most, I can't, I can't say enough about it. So, if I can use those talents to help out in this way, um, I am an incredible reader, I'm an incredible writer, I like to think deeply and work with people, and if I know you and work with you, I am loyal to you to the end, and that's how I devote myself to my students, their families, this town. So if I'm needed up there, I would be more than happy. I do think you need to allow the folks of this town to let us know who they want to come up, because these next years are really important. We have big changes, and I think that's fantastic. Um, so, that seat needs to be filled with someone who is listening to what citizens are saying, and they are, you know, sharing that voice, being that person up there, so whomever the citizens feel should be in that spot, I would agree with that, so. If I can be helpful, I would love to be helpful. If I, Mr. Doughty's going to be helpful, I'm, he's fantastic, too, but we definitely need someone in there that is going to be a, um, a choice of the citizens. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, let me have a second, uh, what was her name? Tiffany. Ms. Tiffany. Regardless of how this comes out, don't give up on the Planning Commission, please keep applying. Uh, you're the type person we need up there, and, you know, I, I hope you can, if we have a vacancy, that you will apply for it. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
I do have reserve on a special election from a cost standpoint, from a voter turnout standpoint. Um, if, you know, the normal election had a three weeks of early voting and a day of voting where it had a full ballot of candidates all across the county and the state, and, you know, a special election, what does the voter turnout look like? Do we, do we even receive the same amount of numbers that we had? Does somebody win that election with less votes than what, uh, the third candidate just got in this last election? Just kind of the, the notes and, and questions that I had and why I stood firm to that third candidate.
I just would hope that we could come to consensus and choose someone so we don't have to spend that money. Uh, I just really don't want to do that. I think we can hear from people without spending all of the money.
If there's nothing else, any more discussion about the vacant board of commissioner position, I'll talk to a little bit about the, uh, open city manager position, touched on that a little bit earlier, that person doesn't have to be a citizen of Fairview.
Or a city manager.
For commissioners form of government, so the city manager is just that, a manager, so that
Person.
Typically has a useful experience and some type of specialized skill in running the city. They wear a lot of hats, and it's important what they do.
So, the charter speaks to that as well, it doesn't say how you'll fill that position, it just says that you'll fill the position. The board commissioner shall appoint
Handpick
Salary of the city manager who shall serve at the will of the board. City manager may not be removed within twelve months from the date on which the city manager assumes the duties of city manager, except for incompetence, malfeasance.
Misfeasance or lack of duties.
Typically, once that person is appointed, there's a contract between you
And that person, and, um,
You know, you can remove that person For cause, anytime during the contract, term of the contract. So, the suggestion that we have is that we do a request for qualifications for that position.
So that you can get the
Broadest pool of applicants that you Get that are qualified, and then Discuss how we interview those persons. Then you have to discuss them in an open meeting like this. I mean, it gets really uncomfortable, right? Whenever you're discussing hiring someone, it gets really uncomfortable. I sat on a school board in a county for, uh, twelve years, and we went through three different directors of schools, and so every time we picked a new directors of schools, six-person school board is discussing those various persons' qualifications right there in front of everybody, and it's prof, you'd be professional about it, but you got to do it, right? So, um, you don't have to go through the request for qualification process, um, we suggest that, uh, but, but you may have someone in mind, just like for the commissioner position. At any time, someone could say, I make a motion that we hire this next person or select this next person to be our city manager, and if there's a second and a vote of three out of the four of you, or if we fill the board by that time, uh, a majority vote, uh, three out of the five, you, um, that person will be your next city manager. And then, our office, the city attorney's office, will negotiate a contract, and there'll be some negotiation about terms with that person. You select the person and you figure out the terms, but we're happy to answer any questions you have. We did draft a, uh, draft request for qualification, so that's been completed, that's been provided to the interim city manager, Mr. Doughty, to review. If you choose to use it, you don't have to use it.
Did the previous city manager's contract get reviewed by the attorney?
Uh, the previous city manager's contract was drafted by our office. The, uh, he had two, at least two different contracts, and on one occasion it was revised, um, and I think what we did is, uh, word documents to the city manager, it may have been negotiated to completion between him and the acting mayor at that time.
And was that ever reviewed by you after they negotiated it?
I don't recall if it was.
So we don't have, uh, like a up-to-date contract that would be something we'd take a look at, right?
We can provide you one immediately. Yes, we have, we have, uh, draft contracts and, and, uh, initial contracts between, um, I don't know about the initial contract between, uh, Mr. Collins and the city, because I wasn't a city attorney, but I know that his contract was, uh, was modified, and then we did a contract that the city approved. I remember beginning of discussion about the terms of it, that we were providing drafts.
You mean when he returned from Nolansville? So when he returned from Nolansville, there was not a contract drafted with a city attorney, right?
I think we sent a template of one, but I think it might have been modified.
After, um, interim city manager, Tom Doughty and I spoke with, um, Chuck Downham from M-TAS, there are several ways that we can go about choosing a new city manager. So that's probably, um, something we would need to decide on. We can ask that advertising be done for a certain amount of time to receive resumes from people who are interested in the position, and we can do that locally if we feel like there are people that are qualified that we feel good about locally. And I guess, um, I'd like to probably hear from everyone to see what their ideas are.
I'd like to ask Mr. Potter one more question before we dis- I'd like to ask Mr. Potter one more question before we discuss that further. The length of the contract, what is your recommendation? Three years, four years?
It's typical around three years.
Around three years, okay, all right. Just, that's all I want to know right now.
I, I have one question.
Yes.
Would the attorney's firm be involved in the advertising or the city?
We would, we would draft a request for qualification, and then you would advertise the city seeking applicants for that, and then basically do a copy of the, of the request for qualification directly from your office or the city's reporter's office, and fill it out and submit it, just like submitting a deal or something, but.
Standard, that would be a resume or?
That's right. Their, their work history, et cetera, municipal projects they've worked on. But the advertisement would be, the city of Fairview is now seeking applicants for a new city manager position. If you're interested, you can pick up your request for qualification at this link or from the city reporter's office or from the city act, acting city manager.
I have one more question, sir. You mentioned spreading out the area that you would like to draw from. What is your recommendation there?
I mean, I, personally, I think that if you told the Tennessee Titans that they could only ever get a coach from Nashville, they would say that's just a bad idea.
Yeah.
There's a lot of qualified people out there who can fill a position, and that means you have to pick one, right?
Right.
You might want, you might pick someone locally, but watch the harm and how they will apply, so that you can see there, and I, and, you know, if you, if you advertise through, through MTS or through, you know, the Municipal Attorneys Association, et cetera, there's different websites where people, you might, you might get a qualified applicant from another part of the state or in the region.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Potter.
When we, when Tom Doughty and I met with MTS at the beginning of the week, they said they're actively searching for city managers for different cities in our state, and they're not having any luck, and advised that if we did have someone that had the qualifications that would be a good city manager that we already knew of, that that would be a good idea to go that direction, because they're not having a lot of luck in the searches they're doing already.
I would love to get the, the request for qualifications out as soon as can be to start capturing resumes or applications. When we had the, the last hiring of the city manager, that we had a search committee, citizen search committee that I thought was very, very unique and successful. I think it was, it was 10 to 15 people that were picked, picked from board members, citizens from, from all likes or varies. They received all of those resumes and qualification list, redacted the name on the resume, so it was pretty neat that it was fully transparent, you didn't know who the applicant was, and scored a rate, rated the applications, and then gave those ratings back to the board, and the board selected, I think, three to interview, and then chose from, from that pair. I just thought it was a, a creative way to get citizens involved and, you know, have them rate the actual qualifications without knowing who it is, and, you know, hold note, removes the subjectivity from it, so.
And while we're taking all that time being creative, Mr. Doughty's working 76 hours a week with five different jobs.
Well, let me, let me say a couple things, and then we.
Mr. Doughty, our last city manager was here for seven years, and so I, I don't think that it's something that is necessarily rushed. I think, I think taking the time to find it right, I, I don't, I don't, you know, that's just my feedback to you.
Is that the way, is that the way we searched for him?
I understand the question.
The way you just recommended, is that the way we searched for our previous city manager?
I'm not sure where it was posted, but it had a search committee up of citizens involved. Citizen involvement's always a good thing. Sorry, Mr. Doughty.
No, you're fine, you're fine. What I took away from the meeting with MTS is, you know, regardless of how far you spread your net, it's, it's imperative you go through a process, and whoever you decide to hire, it's probably best to probably vet, make sure they have the qualifications you want. You can, you can spread your net, Middle Tennessee, Tennessee regionally, and, and MTS can help facilitate that. We can put it out on TGFOA, on, on GFOA, on all kinds of, of websites, and advertise it. It's just, the bigger the net, usually the longer the process, and it's, he said, if you get past state, it usually is over 120 days. So you just, depending on what your decision is, it depends on kind of how I react as far as, I'm going to have to concentrate on taking care of business, and that's as far as the operations, and I will, I will not be able to do everything. I'm not going to hire somebody to do my job that, that I, I may not have. So I'm just, I'm just going to tell you, I will take care of the business, and I'll do whatever you need to do. And I'm, I'm just here to serve. I want to serve my city as long as I can, and in whatever capacity, but I just want to let y'all know that, that the longer it takes, it puts a little more strain at administration.
I think so.
What can we do to help take the strain off of you right now?
Just make a decision.
That's right. We need to make a decision.
My play depends on your play, and so just whatever y'all want to do, I will base what I do on what you, what you do.
So to reiterate, there's no set way to pick a city manager. You can do it a number of ways. If you have someone in mind to make a motion tonight or next month, and pick a city manager who can do that, if you have someone who wants to elect, do it any way you want to do it.
And I don't want this to be construed as saying you need to make a decision tonight. I'm just saying, make a decision for a plan, and then we move forward with the plan, and however big that net is, is fine. There's, just, 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 you know, the main thing is, is there's a process, that you feel good about who's, who's your city manager, and you feel good about going forward. And however many applicants it takes, and however many things, is, is, is your choice.
That's where I think we put, we put it out as quickly as we can, and, and if we come back first of the year to our, our first or second meeting, and we've put it, we've put the request for qualification out, we've only got three applications, and we, we don't need a search committee, because we only have three people to review, you know, and so the sooner we get it out there, the more we can start to understand what it's going to look like, what it's going to take, because I know it is hard to find people to apply for jobs and things right now, because they, you know, unemployment rates is low, so it's, we may not get, like Mr. Downham said, we may not get very many applications, like the other city manager openings currently happening, but sooner we get it out, the sooner we can digest it and make a, a decision and, and figure out how we need to proceed, so.
Ms. Leslie made a great comment a minute ago. What can we do to help, regardless of how quick we can pull this forward? Is there anything that the board up here now can do to help you handle your job, or you, you feel comfortable with what you're able to take care of now?
No, I feel comfortable. The staff is amazing, the, we're, we've come a long way in a short time as far as feeling like the direction we're going, and I've, no, I'm totally happy with where we are. I just, you know, when you're doing finance, you're doing HR, you're part-time IT, you're part-time this, part-time that, it just, your day goes, and then you've still got to do AP, and you've still got to get payroll out, and it's just, you know, and, and then when you're fielding calls on things that you don't have really any, that don't relate to the day-to-day operations, it just, it's just, it's just time-consuming, whereas, you know, if, if you had a, a city manager, they could hire staff to do those things, where right now, I'm, I'm still having, I'm still doing them.
Staff, other than the help that you have. I understand Tom perfectly. Thank you.
Mr. Potter, back to item D for a second. If, if someone makes a motion or a recommendation for someone for us to vote on, and that doesn't happen, and then it, say we all four have four different people that in mind, how, like, we don't have to say we want a special election right now, do we? Okay, so we can kind of think about it, reconvene at the next meeting and see if...
Sure, I mean, it might be something you discuss over the course of two or three meetings.
So what is our?
I want to change my vote.
What is our date, what is our date?
I think it's also the September 19th, because I remember the 90th is the day that Mayor Randy resigned, and his last mayor, Anderson, built a position which created the vacancy, I think that's right.
We'll probably have two January meetings before we hit that 90-day window.
I do think the first four meetings in February may have to be back on. So you've got, you've got two board meetings in January, actually.
So. Let's see. January 5th and January 19th, and then the next one is February 2nd, so we actually have through the February 2nd, so we have actually three board meetings to make a full decision.
And you also have the right to call any special call meetings in the, in the manager room, if you wanted to do that just for that purpose. I think to be safe, if a decision should be made at least by the February 2nd, where the PSC.
So would we just, if we couldn't come to a conclusion now, would we just make a motion to defer it to the next, and then, would that be proper?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, you have, you have, it's on the agenda tonight, which is to, I think, to discuss or to defer it. Someone can always, when it comes up tonight, make the motion to defer it again, and defer it to a discussion meeting. But it's on your agenda tonight to, to discuss or take action, so you don't necessarily have to take it.
Here, Mr. Potter, on the city manager discussion tonight, do we need to vote to post the request for qualifications? Do we need to take action on that, or can we do that?
However you choose to proceed, you would need to vote.
Okay.
And would we need to decide how long that would go on, or?
I think that it's typical, Mayor, that there would be, that there would be a deadline set, like, just like when you're submitting out bids for a project or a city to do, you have requests or proposals, and you say that their deadline is, their, their response would be by January 31st or something like that, and then you'll know how many applicants you have. You want to give them time to complete it, right? Some people are going to want to give you the resume, maybe the work history, it's not something they can really do over time. But 30 days is the date that's, that's typical.
So like, the second meeting in January is the 19th, which would give us a little more than 30 days.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other suggestions or questions?
I feel like we really need to try and find someone to at least help Tom. That's too much for one person, 70 to 80 hours a week. He needs someone to be able to help him.
Well, but we can't do that until we make a decision, because what we're doing is forcing him to hire somebody into his position. So if we don't make a decision, then he has to hire somebody into his position, and you, you can't really do it that way, you know what I'm saying?
Right, but is there not, within the employees that we have right now in the office?
They can't do his job.
None, not help at all.
I've, I've been working with him for three weeks now, and trust me, they, they can't do his job.
Ms. Street, I appreciate it. I'm fine.
Yeah.
I've, I've worked, I'm fine. I just, I just don't want it to be very, super long-term. Yeah, I appreciate your concern. Thank you.
Anyone else? We good? Okay. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and then we will start our regular board meeting. Thank you.